Good morning again. I'd like to call the Honorary Degrees and Recognition Committee meeting to order and ask Board Secretary Mark Foley to call the roll.
Thank you Chairman Simon, Vice Chair Trustee Malden, Trustee Cooper, Trustee Morissette, Trustee Brock, Trustee Malone, Trustee Roy, Trustee Vandevort, Trustee Phelps, Trustee Gray, Trustee Gronberg, Trustee Calhoun, Trustee Hall, Trustee Brooks, and Trustee Humphrey. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you Marg. Vice Chancellor for System Communications Lynn Cole, would you please introduce any members of the media?
Thank you Chair Simon. We're pleased to have with us this morning Wilisha Morris with AL.com and Victor Hagan and Hannah Grace Mayfield with the Crimson White. We're also expecting other members of the media to join us throughout the morning. On the live stream, we have Ken Roberts with the Tuscaloosa News and Trish Crane with Alabama Daily News. And we're pleased to welcome any other members of the, on the, members of the media on the live stream today.
Thank you Lynn, and we, we welcome all the members of the media. The committee meeting agenda was provided in advance of this meeting. Is there any objection to adopting the agenda as presented? Okay, the agenda is adopted as presented. And you were also provided a copy of the minutes of our last meeting in September. Is there any objection to approving those minutes? Those minutes are approved. So today, our agenda contains 10 items. There are three UA items, three UAB items, and four UAH items. Before we open the floor for discussion, may I have a motion to consider the UA items collectively? All right, thank you all. So President Muller, would you please present the items for UA?
Good morning Chairman Simon, Chancellor Trent, and distinguished members of the Board. For your consideration, the materials today are the following resolutions. First, approving academic program naming opportunities. Second, approving namings in Alston Hall and the Culver House College of Business. And then finally, approving or revising 18 endowments. Thank you for your support. I respectfully request the committee's favorable consideration of these resolutions.
Thank you Dr. Muller. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding these items? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Since there is no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the UA resolutions, say aye. Any opposed? These items are approved. Thank you. And so now, we turn to UAB. And we place the agenda now in the hands of President Watts. You have the floor.
Thank you Chair Simon. Members of the committee, Board members present, along with Chancellor Trent. UAB has two naming resolutions before the Board. They are accepting gifts and pledges from various donors, expressing appreciation and establishing named spaces in the Francis and Miller-Gory Hall at UAB School of Engineering. The second is establishing naming opportunities in the Orthodontics Clinic in the UAB School of Medicine. I'm sorry, School of Dentistry. In addition, UAB has summary resolutions establishing 11 endowments to support UAB's educational, health, and research missions. We respectfully request favorable consideration of these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you Dr. Watts. Is there a motion to approve these items? All right, second. Any questions or comments from the committee regarding these items? All right, thank you. Let me just, just take a moment of privilege to just thank all the development officers who are working so hard, and the generosity of the, of the, of the various alumni communities in, in all of these institutions who are so generous in their donations. So, you know, all these things are just evidence of the momentum that all of our institutions had. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and there's no further discussion, so we'll take a vote. All in, all in favor of approving the UAB resolutions, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. All of these items are approved. And so Dr. Carr, we, we look forward to your presentation of the UAH items. And before we open the floor for discussion, may I have a motion to consider the items collectively from UAH? All right, Dr. Carr?
Well, thank you Chair Simon and members of the committee. Chair Simon, I recommend acknowledgement and appreciation of the gifts contained in the Board book to be used as part of the university's ongoing mission to promote the education of students and to provide quality programs in the areas of teaching, research, and service. I want to highlight gifts in three areas. First, endowed funds. UAH has received numerous gifts for student and faculty support, including gifts from Dr. and Mrs. Bernard Schorr, Dr. Annie Taylor, Dr. Jitinda Gupta, and Mrs. Irma Tudor. Second, gifts. Numerous entities from the community have provided support for the university, including Radiance Technologies, Alabama Credit Union, SAIC, the Jane K. Lowe Charitable Foundation, the Bonnie Lee Bolding Charitable Foundation, the National Space Club, and various anonymous donors. Finally, naming opportunities. I'm pleased to present two namings at UAH, including Sports Med Orthopedic Specialist naming the Spragons Hall Gymnasium, and Dr. Jitinda Gupta for naming a space in the Business Administration Building. Chair Simon, UAH is thankful for the support it receives from our community, and I respectfully request that the committee give favorable consideration to these items.
Thank you Dr. Carr. And again, we certainly appreciate the, the exceptional momentum that you're, that you're building and have built in Huntsville. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments from the committee before we take a vote? All right, thank you. So all in favor then of approving the UAH resolutions, please say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, the items are approved. All right, there's, there's no further business then to come before the committee, so we stand adjourned.
I'd like to call the nominating committee meeting to order and ask Board Secretary Mark Foley to please call the roll.
Thank you Chair Brooks, Vice Chair Trustee Humphrey, Trustee Morissette, Trustee Brock, and Trustee Simon. You have a quorum.
Thank you, and welcome to any members of the media who are with us today and viewing the, or viewing the live stream of the meeting. A committee meeting agenda was provided in advance of this meeting. Is there any objection to adopting the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted as presented. You were previously provided a copy of the minutes of the September 12th, 2025 committee meeting. Is there any objection to approving the minutes as distributed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We have three items of business before the committee today, which are nominations for trustees to fill the seats in second, fourth, and sixth congressional districts. The second, the second district seat is currently held by trustee Mike Brock, who is eligible for reelection. Are there any nominations to fill this seat?
Madam Chair, I would like to renominate Mike Brock.
Thank you Barbara. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. This nomination will go to the full Board later today. The next nomination is for a trustee to fill the seat in the fourth district. The fourth district seat is currently held by trustee Evie Malden, who is eligible for reelection. Are there any nominations to fill this seat?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to nominate Evie Malden to fill this position.
Thank you Ken. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Her nomination will go to the full Board later today. The final nomination for a trustee to fill a seat is in the sixth district. The sixth district is currently held by trustee Mala Calhoun, who is eligible for reelection as well. Are there any nominations to fill this seat?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mala Calhoun for the sixth district.
Thank you, trustee Morissette. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. This nomination will too, go to the full Board later today. There being no further business to come before the committee, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting to order and ask Board Secretary Mark Foley to call the roll.
Thank you Chair Humphrey, Vice Chair Trustee Morissette, Trustee Cooper, Trustee Malone, Trustee Vandevort, Trustee Malden, Trustee Calhoun, and Trustee Brooks. You have a quorum.
Thank you, and welcome to any members of the media or the public who are with us today viewing the live stream. Before we begin our agenda, I would like to take a moment to recognize the special group joining us. Seated behind me are the student government leaders from across the University of Alabama system. They are here to observe both this committee meeting and the full Board meeting, and will go on to participate in the inaugural UA System Student Leaders Summit following today's proceeding. Students, we are honored to have you, grateful for your leadership across our campus, and we just want to say welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Also, before we move on to our agenda, I would like to note, myself along with Dr. Johnson, supported by Vice Chair Trustee Marsette, we visited with the SGA presidents, the Student Affairs leaders, and they gave us some very valuable feedback, overview of what they in turn would like to see during their time as being leaders of the SGA organization. And I just want to thank Cheryl, she was there to capture every moment, to make sure we didn't miss anything, so I'm thankful for her. We will be getting that information to you of what we've learned, and we want to continue supporting our student leaders, our student government across our campuses. And so you'll be getting that information, and hopefully, as the service we are doing as a Board, we want to support them, because that's what it's truly all about. Okay, moving on with that said, I would like to move on to the adoption of today's agenda. The committee meeting agenda was provided in advance of this meeting. Is there any objection to adopting the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted as presented. You were previously provided with a copy of the minutes of the September 12th, 2025 committee meeting. Is there any objection to adopt, to approving the minutes as distributed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Our agenda contains a total of 26 items, with 21 items for consideration for recommendation to the Board. There is one UA system item, seven UA items, 16 UAB items, and two UAH items. These items include three individual action items and 18 administrative action items. There is also five information items. UA System. I will now ask Dr. Tangjanieta Johnson, Senior Vice Chancellor for Academic and Student Affairs, to present the UA System Information Item.
Madam Chair, members of the committee and the Board, good morning. Before I present the Systems One Information Item, please allow me to also echo trustee Humphrey's words of welcome and appreciation this morning to our student leaders. Our office has been pleased to help facilitate their meeting this morning, and I do recognize and thank my executive assistant Cheryl Perryman, Kate Harris from the Board Office, and of course, my colleague Lynn Cole, for their logistical support and expertise in working with the students to help make this summit planning possible. As noted in your items, I have one information item on behalf of our system campuses this morning. Board Rule 506 requires that all cooperative, joint, and other collaborative academic programs within our system are reviewed periodically, and that the operating status and general vitality of these programs are reviewed by the System Office of Academic and Student Affairs at least every other year. As part of your committee packet, I have provided a report which confirms that each campus has engaged in the system operations and vitality review of the identified programs, and we have provided the Chancellor and each president and provost a copy of the appropriate reviews for the programs in which they are participating. General reviews were completed for six cooperative programs and two shared programs, and we were able to verify the existence of active program directors and coordinating committees, evidence of active meetings in support of the effective administration of each program, evidence of a current program agreement for the participating campuses, details regarding internal and external evaluations of the program in the last five years, or those that might be pending, and active enrollment and completion data for the last three years. While each program is expected to maintain its current comprehensive program review schedule and provide those related findings to our office, the System Office of Academic Affairs will engage in its next operational and vitality review in fall of 2027. If there are no more que, if there are no questions, Madam Chair, this concludes the UA System items.
Thank you Dr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this item? UA. We will now consider the UA Individual Action Item. Prior to opening the floor for comment, may I have a motion to consider this item? I will now ask UA President Dr. Peter Muller to present the UA Individual Action Item.
Thank you Chair Humphrey. I am pleased to present today for your approval, a new Bachelor of Science degree in artificial intelligence at the University of Alabama. As you are no doubt aware, there's a great need for professionals to join the workforce with expertise in data sciences and artificial intelligence. By starting this degree program, we will equip students with essential technical knowledge and the practical skills to succeed in the field of artificial intelligence and data science. This program will also prepare students who wish to continue their education for advanced study at the graduate level. Employment opportunities for graduates span a broad spectrum of sectors, including healthcare, banking and financial services, e-commerce, manufacturing, cybersecurity, automotive, government and defense, pharmaceuticals, and more. By integrating tech, excuse me, by integrating training in both artificial intelligence and computer science, the program will prepare graduates to drive innovation and progress for the future. I respectfully request the committee's favorable consideration of this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you Dr. Muller. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this item? We have a motion and a second. Since there's no further discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor of granting approval for the UA Individual Action Items, say aye. All opposed, say no. The item is approved. We will now consider the UA Administrative Action Items. Prior to opening the floor for comment, may I have a motion to consider these items? I will now ask Dr. Johnson to present the UA Administrative Action Items.
Madam Chair, I am pleased to present three administrative action items to the committee for consideration on behalf of UA. These include consideration of resolutions approving the establishment of the Thomas L. Jones Endowed Professorship in Law, and two distinguished Shelby Endowment appointees to include the appointment of Dr. Alice E. Smith as an endowed Shelby Distinguished Professor at UA, and Dr. Carla Atkinson as UA's first appointment as an endowed Shelby Distinguished Associate Professor. Before I ask our two distinguished Shelby appointees to stand and be recognized, please allow me to share just a bit more about each of them. Dr. Alice Smith, if, thank you, you may have to click that one more time, I think there's some other information there. But Dr. Alice Smith is an internationally recognized scholar who is widely known for her groundbreaking work in computational intelligence and the optimization of complex systems. A recently elected member of the National Academy of Engineering, Dr. Smith holds a PhD in Engineering Management and Systems from Missouri University of Science and Technology. She is a highly cited leader in her field, and is a prolific scholar with hundreds of peer-reviewed journal articles, conference papers, and more than 20 books, book chapters to her credit. With affiliations that have included the Joe W. Forehand Jr. Distinguished Professorship in Industrial Systems Engineering at Auburn University, we are proud to now celebrate her affiliation with the University of Alabama, where she will continue to elevate excellence as part of the Crimson Tide community. Dr. Smith, I know she's here with us, if you would please stand so that everyone can see you. Dr. Carla Atkinson is an Associate Professor of Aquatic Ecology at the University of Alabama, renowned for her pioneering research on freshwater ecosystems, with a PhD in Ecology and Evolutionary Biology from the University of Oklahoma. Dr. Atkinson's work integrates species traits, ecosystem function, and conservation biology, particularly focusing on freshwater mussels, one of North America's most threatened faunal groups. Her research has significantly advanced our understanding of nutrient cycling, biodiversity, and habitat restoration, and her leadership in scientific societies and public outreach has made her a vital force in freshwater conservation. Dr. Atkinson, if you would please stand. I promised her she did not have to make a speech, but we are so grateful to have, have her with us here today. With that, Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the establishment and appointments as presented, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you Dr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding these items? We have a motion and a second. Since there's no further discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor of granting approval for the UA Administrative Action Items, say aye. All opposed, say no. The items are approved. I will now ask Dr. Johnson to present the UA Information Items.
UA has three information items for your review this morning. The first involves the establishment of a concentration in digital consumer engagement within the existing Bachelor of Science degree in Consumer Sciences. This concentration will provide students with relevant technical knowledge, skills, and insights as today's digital economy and consumer workplace continue to evolve. As noted in your materials, this concentration will consist of existing courses and one new course, and will replace the current minor in digital consumer engagement. It will be implemented in fall 2026. The second item is the establishment of a post-baccalaureate certificate in instructional design. The program, which will provide students the ability to, to design instruction in various fields and leverage technology in doing so, will be open to students with a bachelor's degree in any field, and provides a fast-track pathway for completion in as few as six months. Students completing this certificate can apply their credits toward the Masters in Instructional Technology at UA, and if, if they are admitted to that program, of course. An additional 15 credit hours would be needed to complete the Masters for holders of this certificate. That program is set for implementation for fall 2026. And finally, the third item relates to UA's deletion of the Doctor of Philosophy degree in Applied Mathematics. For, this is a longstanding program, a joint program, and has been offered in the past with UA, UAB, and UAH. With the recent transition of this program from joint to cooperative status, UA felt that it was a good time to delete this program from their inventory, since it posed a risk of creating internal competition and duplicative requirements with their existing mathematics PhD program. Faculty feedback favored a single mathematics doctoral pathway, and the department recommended closure of the program. UAB and UAH will continue with the cooperative degree program in mathematics. Madam Chair, that concludes the items for UA, and again, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding these items? UAB. We will now consider the UAB Administrative Action Items. Prior to opening the floor for comment, may I have a motion to consider these items? I will now ask Dr. Johnson to present the UAB Administrative Action Items.
UAB has 15 administrative action items for your consideration today, including consideration for approval of the renaming of the R. Edward Fault Jr. MD Endowed Professorship in Epilepsy to the R. Edward Fault and Janet Jackson Fault Professorship in Epilepsy Research, as well as approving the appointment of, of the first holder of this renamed professorship with the recommended appointment of Dr. Jersey Zoflarsky. UAB is also requesting approval for the posthumous appointment of Dr. Letitia Eloprey as the second holder of the Jeanne M. Marazo MD/MPH Endowed Professorship in Innovation and Advancement through Mentorship. Dr. Eloprey tragically passed away on June 28th, as officials in the Division of Infectious Diseases were in the process of preparing her nomination for this endowed position. On behalf of UAB, we appreciate the opportunity to honor the memory of Dr. Eloprey with this posthumous appointment. Other approval requests include the appointment of, of seven additional endowed professorships, and two endowed chairholders as outlined in your committee materials. And finally, UAB has requested closure of three centers to include the UAB Pulmonary Injury and Repair Center, as well as the UAB Microbiome Center, both in the Marnix E. Hearsink School of Medicine, and the, and the Center for Health Informatics for Patient Safety Quality. These centers were recently reviewed for viability and subsequently recommended for closure. UAB officials have confirmed that no donor funding, students, or personnel would be negatively impacted by the closures, and any remaining activities have been moved, moved to other units as outlined in the respective resolutions. Madam Chair, that concludes the administrative action items for UAB, and I'd be happy to join Dr. Woodford Borden in responding to any questions, but do request your approval.
Thank you Dr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding these items? We have a motion and a second. Since there's no further discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor of granting approval for the UAB Administrative Action Items, say aye. All opposed, say no. The items are approved. I will now ask Dr. Johnson to present the UAB Information Item.
UAB has one information item. It involves the establishment of a 15-hour graduate certificate in dental biomaterials. This credential will offer students an in-depth education in material science with a focus on materials that are used in clinical dentistry. The majority of the coursework will be delivered online, but students will also have opportunities for interactive webinar-based review sessions, and optional one- or two-week in-person research experiences at the UAB School of Dentistry to allow for increased engagement and provide the opportunity to apply their knowledge in a lab setting. UAB plans to implement the program starting summer 2026. Madam Chair, this concludes the information items for UAB, and I'm again pleased to join Dr. Woodford Borden in responding to any questions.
Thank you Dr. Johnson. Is there, are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this item? UAH. We will now consider the UAH Individual Action Items. Prior to opening the floor for comment, may I have a motion to consider these items? I will now ask Dr. David Pillel, Provost and Executive Vice President for Academic Affairs, to present the two UAH Individual Action Items.
Thank you Madam Chair Humphrey. Good morning trustees. Today, we present two proposals for your consideration. First is the Master's Degree in Clinical Mental Health Counseling. This 60-hour program would be consistent with the Alabama Code for Alabama Board of Examiners in Counseling, and this will provide comprehensive training in a variety of areas that include counseling theory, appraisal of individuals, and research and evaluation. Most importantly, graduates will be eligible for state licensure as licensed professional counselors. The Alabama Demand Occupations Report lists several human services occupations, and program graduates would help meet the requirement, the great need for substance abuse, behavioral disorder, and mental health workers. And further, the counseling, the correctional counseling, excuse me, concentration will address a vital need for qualified mental address a vital need for qualified mental health counselors in Alabama's correctional settings, which really came to light in a federal class-action lawsuit of Bragg's at Oliveri Dunn that found mental health services, quote-unquote, horrendously inadequate, so certainly a great need. Our second proposal for your consideration is a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration degree in Cybersecurity Management. Effectively, this proposal is going to enhance our existing cybersecurity concentration within ISE Information Systems major of the BSBA and create a standalone major. This cybersecurity management program blends business and technical knowledge that will enable students to assess risks, develop protective measures, and collaborate effectively with diverse stakeholders to manage cybersecurity risks. Note that the program builds professional certifications as well into the program, including CISSP, which is Certified Information Systems Security Professional. These cybersecurity management graduates will provide strategic leadership, safeguard sensitive data, and strengthen Alabama's overall cybersecurity resilience. And focusing on North Alabama, the expanding defense sector, along with the growth of technology and finance companies, has created an urgent need for experts who can oversee cybersecurity policies, conduct risk assessments, and ensure regulatory compliance. Thanks for your consideration of these proposals, and thanks for what you all do for us.
Thank you, Dr. Pyle. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding these items? We have a motion and a second. Since there's no further discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor of granting approval for the UAH Individual Action Items say aye. All opposed, say no. The items are approved. Now I would like to call Dr. Stephen Hood, UA Vice President for Student Life, to present our Student Affairs Spotlight.
Thank you, Trustee Humphrey. Thank you, trustees, for allowing us to spend a few minutes here with you this morning to talk a little bit more about student life, provide an update to you, and specifically this morning, I'm going to talk about student engagement. Student engagement at UA has been a signature component of the student experience for many years, contributing to our success in recruitment and strong enrollment. Today I'll share updates on several areas of student engagement, how they enhance the student experience, and their positive impact on student success. We use this pyramid to visualize our mission in student life. Our mission is maximizing the student learning experience, and we do that through these three levels: resources and support, community and belonging, and outside-the-classroom learning experiences that help students thrive and succeed. And I just want you to know here that student engagement is mission central for us in student life. Our work falls into all three of these levels, but for the next few minutes, I'll primarily be talking about those top two. We've reviewed enrollment and GPA data, along with involvement information, seven select areas. The Blackburn Institute, which is a leadership development and civic engagement cohort-based program. The Center for Service and Leadership offers our students community service and engagement opportunities every week of the academic year, with UA students logging over 127,000 hours of community service last academic year. Fraternity and sorority life, supporting our largest, and I would argue, strongest Greek community in the country. Student Government Association, which needs no introduction, given their being here with us today. Student employment. This is a new area of involvement that we are focusing on this year. We're the largest employer of student employees on campus with over 1,100 student employees currently in the Division of Student Life. We want to make sure these opportunities not only help us, but help students prepare for their future. University Programs offers weekly student-led events to allow additional connection and engagement for students. And finally, we consider University Recreation Sport Clubs, which are different from intramurals and represent a higher commitment to competitive teams and travel and compete. We reviewed the data from the last four years of students who are involved in these seven areas. There were over 41,000 students during this time period that were connected in these seven areas of engagement, representing about 56% of the student body during that time period. Now, you can see here on this slide, students involved in these programs show a GPA boost ranging from .04 to .53 compared to their non-involved peers. Even the lowest average GPA among one of these seven groups is actually 3.3, so these students have really healthy GPAs, and they are outperforming their non-involved peers. Now, that's good, but this is where the data gets a bit more exciting. First, we see a 10% higher retention rate amongst students who attend university program events versus those who do not. Among those groups who provide a sense of belonging to students, like the Blackburn Institute, SGA, Sports Club, student employment, there's a 12% higher rate of retention. And finally, those students who serve in opportunities like the Center for Service and Leadership, like in the Habitat for Humanity photo that you see here, there's a 14% higher rate of retention. And when we combine all seven of these areas together, meaning we look at all of those students who are involved in those seven areas versus those who are not, there's a 16% higher rate of retention, and we believe that is worthy of note. And while this data is, shows correlation, not necessarily causation, it strongly suggests that these programs provide a scaffolding to support student success, and that's why we hold student engagement and the pieces of student experience as mission-critical. It's not just fun, it helps students succeed. And in our well-being surveys with students, social well-being is the only dimension of the seven dimensions of well-being that have a significant predictive relationship with retention. That means when we control for every other variable, high school GPA, UA GPA, college affiliation, honors, participation, students who feel socially well and plugged in have a better retention than those who do not. We are continuing to drill down in this data and will expand this assessment across more student life programs in the future to help us identify those areas of high impact. We want to have the best benefit possible for our students, because we want to ensure that we continue to provide every UA student with the best opportunity to succeed. I'm grateful for your support, President Mueller's support, as we continue to enhance the UA experience, because the student experience is not just about having fun and making friends, it's essential for making sure they succeed. So with that, I am happy to take any questions, but I'd also like to acknowledge Dr. Roslyn Moore Miller, who is our Assistant Vice President for Student Engagement, in the back of the room. She oversees, she oversees many of these programs that were highlighted today and does a fantastic job, so I wanted to recognize her, but I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you for sharing. So many ways children and students can get involved, and we see if they're involved, they make it across the finish line. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Are there any items of any business coming from the committee? There being no further business to come before the committee, we stand adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the UA Institutional Meeting of the University of Alabama Assistant Board of Trustees, and ask Board Secretary Mark Foley to please call the roll.
Thank you, Pro Tim. From the First District, Trustee Cooper. Trustee Morissette. From the Second District, Trustee Brock. Trustee Malone. From the Third District, Trustee Roy. Trustee Vanivort. From the Fourth District, Trustee Malden. From the Fifth District, Trustee Gray. Trustee Gronberg. From the Sixth District, Trustee Calhoun. Trustee Hall. From the Seventh District, Trustee Brooks. Trustee Humphrey. And Trustee Simon. Also like to recognize our UA System institutional leadership, Chancellor Sid Trent, Dr. Peter Mueller, President of UA, Dr. Ray Watts, President of UAB, Dr. Chuck Carr, President of UAH, and UAB Health Systems CEO Dolan Bogarello. Finally, like to recognize the faculty and student representatives to the board in attendance today. First, for the faculty members from UA, Dr. Matthew Hudnall from UAB, Dr. Daniel Gavan and from UAH, Dr. Andrea Word, and the student representatives from UA, Ms. Lucy Bondhouse from UAB, Mr. Saad Khan, and from UAH, Mr. Chris Pinkert. Pro Tim Phelps, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Mark. Lynn, are there any additional members of the media that we should introduce?
We have a few additional members of the media who have joined us today from CBS42. We're also pleased to welcome any other members of the media who might have joined the live stream.
All right, thank you, Lynn. We appreciate your interest in our activities. A meeting agenda was provided in advance of this meeting. Are there any objections to adopting the agenda as presented? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is adopted. A consent agenda was also provided in advance of this meeting. May I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments concerning the consent agenda items? Right, hearing none, we will vote. All in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Then those items are approved. A draft of the September 12th, 2025 meeting minutes and the October 17th, 2025 special called meeting minutes have been distributed to the board. Are there any objections to approving the minutes as distributed? We're hearing none, those minutes are approved. The November 7th, 2025 administrative report has also been distributed to the board. Are there any questions or comments concerning the administrative report? Hearing none, the administrative report is hereby accepted. And Chancellor Trent, will you please give your report?
Good morning. Thank you, Pro Tim Phelps. Today I'd like to briefly reflect on leadership. Leadership in terms of what it means, at least to me, why it matters, and how our universities are preparing the next generation of effective and principled leaders. Leadership isn't about status, it's about service. It's the idea of placing the interests of the institution above your own and acting with humility, care, and respect for others. Regardless of the situation, the guiding principle remains the same. It's not about our personal interests as administrators, it's about the mission and the people we serve through it. Across the University of Alabama system, we are preparing students to lead in that same spirit. Whether in the classroom, research lab, or the leadership programs we offer at each of our institutions, our students are learning to lead by bringing together intellect and innovation to solve real-world problems and advance ideas that will serve and strengthen our communities. They are learning that leadership is not just about having a title or making decisions, it's about building trust, solving problems together, and using influence to make a positive difference. Whether these students go on to lead in business, education, government, healthcare, or in their local communities, we want our graduates to lead with purpose and to remember that true leadership serves others. And our students are ready to learn and to lead. I am inspired by their eagerness and their desire to make a positive impact. And in that regard, we have student leaders here with us today that have already been recognized in the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee by Trustee Humphrey, but they are here today for our UA System Student Leaders Summit, and because I want to try to embarrass them as much as possible, please stand and let us all look at you. And that includes the ones, that includes the ones at the trustees' table, Lucy, Saad, Chris. All right, thank you. As I, as I look at this group, I see students who care deeply about their peers, their campuses, and the world around them. You are modeling servant leadership in the way you advocate for your peers, build community, and work to make our campuses stronger. When you talk about leadership, it's, it's, it's important to remember that we are all leaders. I want to thank our system leadership, our trustees, our system and university officers for the leadership you demonstrate every day. Together, we lead a system that has the great privilege and responsibility to educate the future leaders of the state and nation. We are preparing students not just for successful careers, but for lives of service and meaning. Let us all continue to lead by example, to inspire those around us, and to ensure that every graduate leaves our institutions ready to serve, to innovate, and to make a lasting difference. Thank you to all in this room for your leadership, for your unwavering commitment, your vision, and your belief in the transformative power of education. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sid. That was very thoughtful, we appreciate that. Appreciate your leadership also. We are, as we've said, we are honored and pleased to have with us the SGA President from the University of Alabama here. So Ms. Bondhouse, would you make the SGA or student representative presentation for us?
My name is Lucy Bondhouse, and I have the honor of serving as the 114th Student Government Association President. For those of you I may have not met, I'm a senior from Tuscaloosa, Alabama, majoring in cybersecurity. Over the past six months, my administration has been hard at work. I'm extremely proud of my resilient team in times of change and their ability to seek out and identify opportunities to advance our university, allowing us to reach our fullest potential as an organization. When I was elected to serve by the student body, I promised four overarching goals that I am committed to advancing during my time as president: community connection, campus experience, student opportunity, and academic achievement. This semester, SGA has focused heavily on community connection and collaboration, both on our campus and across the UA system. I'm excited to share that following today's Board of Trustees meeting, we will host the first-ever UA System Student Leaders Summit, welcoming student leaders from UAB, UAH, and UA to the capstone. This event will bring together student government leaders from all three system campuses to observe the Board of Trustees meetings, hear from, hear updates from President Mueller, several university administrators, and myself, and engage in meaningful conversation about shared opportunities to serve the more than 70,000 students in the UA system. This new summit reflects our continued effort to expand collaboration beyond student government and into broader leadership across our campuses, while maintaining our longstanding tradition of partnership and shared progress. This fall also marks, marks the successful launch of one of my key campaign initiatives, the Airport Transit Program. In partnership with UA Transportation Services and College Brake Bus, SGA now offers affordable, reliable transportation to and from the Birmingham and Atlanta airports during peak travel periods, including fall and Thanksgiving breaks. This program was designed with our out-of-state and international students in mind, and stands as, stands as an example of what can be accomplished when students and administration work together to create practical, lasting solutions. In addition to supporting accessibility, our administration, our administration has worked to strengthen academic excellence. This semester, our Vice President for Academic Affairs, Samantha Simmons, successfully facilitated a campus-wide Wall Street Journal subscription for all students, faculty, and staff. Through this partnership with university libraries, our UA community now has free access to WSJ.com and its full library of professional and educational resources. Our commitment to recognizing student achievement also inspired the creation of the Legends Punch Card. This program rewards students who made the dean's or president's list with exclusive discounts at 28 local businesses. As a Tuscaloosa native, I'm especially proud of this initiative, which not only honors our students' hard work, but also highlights the incredible local businesses that make this community so special. This fall, SGA also hosted the Fourth Annual Battle of the Bands in partnership with the Interfraternity Council and the Alabama Panellenic Association. This year's event had the largest attendance to date, raising funds for the Joe Espie Need Scholarship and bringing together students and community members for a night of incredible music and music and community. Events like these remind us how powerful campus life can be when creativity and community come together. We've also worked to enhance the student game day experience, ensuring that shakers for students are available at every home game, increasing student accessibility, and continuing to foster a sense of unity and Crimson Tide spirit in Bryant-Denny Stadium. Before I close, I would like to take a moment to recognize an important transition within our organization. Rick Funk served as our interim SGA advisor through September. His leadership and commitment to student success were invaluable, and we were so proud to see him recognized as SGA Advisor of the Year at SEC Exchange in Austin, Texas this summer. I also want to extend a warm welcome to our new advisor, Ella Marie Maggio, a two-time UA graduate dedicated to empowering student leaders and fostering meaningful engagement across campus. We are so grateful for her commitment to SGA. Of course, none of this would be possible without the incredible members of our organization. From first-year council, to senate, to lobby board, to judicial board, to my executive team, many of whom are with me today, this administration could not achieve this level of success without their talent, dedication, and drive to make the capstone stronger every single day. Thank you all so much for being here today and for this opportunity to share the progress of the 114th administration. And as always, roll tide.
Thank you, Lucy. And thank you for devoting your time and attention to those projects. Please now to call on our friend, Dr. Matthew Hudnall, to present the UA Faculty Representative Report to the board. Thank you, Matthew.
Good morning, Chancellor, trustees, presidents, and leaders from across our system. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Dr. Matthew Hudnall, President of the UA Faculty Senate and Associate Professor of Management Information Systems in the Culver House College of Business. It has been my honor to serve and work closely with you, with our administration, and with colleagues from across our campuses. This is my final year as Faculty Senate President. I've had the privilege of serving long enough to be tied for the longest tenure in our institution's history, and that's plenty long enough for me. The time has been meaningful because of the people in this room and a shared commitment to student success, research excellence, and service to the people of the state of Alabama. I want to start today by briefly highlighting three recent Faculty Senate activities that reflect our collaborative work in leadership and focus on quality, and then highlight a true success in interdisciplinary research. The Senate partnered with the administration to study and support renewable contract faculty. The task force has focused on clarity, pathways for advancement, and consistent expectations that help departments recruit and retain talent while keeping student success at the center. We've also partnered with campus leadership to streamline research support, and we hope to launch new faculty research programs that aim to spur significant research growth. Additionally, the Senate supported the use of midterm student opinion of instruction, which was rolled out for the first time campus-wide this semester as an option for faculty. The goal was early feedback that allows instructors to adjust in real time, and this was part of a broader set of efforts to strengthen teaching, advising, and student outcomes. These efforts aim to support faculty across teaching our students, service to our disciplines and community, and growing our research activities. In my 25 years at UA, I've had the honor in partnering in over 80 funded research projects across most areas on campus, including engineering, business, and social sciences. I'm a true data geek, that's just who I am. And that curiosity has pulled me into new disciplines that broaden my portfolio and shaped a very unique faculty research profile. For example, when Alabamians register for a vehicle and provide proof of insurance, I created the system that verifies that insurance in real time. I created the statewide crime data dashboards and drug data repository, and also helped create the system that verifies driver information. And when you're pulled over on the side of the road and get that oh-so-nice printed citation, I helped create that system as well. These data-centered efforts help improve the lives of the people of our state. They are not only advancing theory, we are turning theory into practice and practice into production. With that spirit, I want to highlight a hub of faculty, industry, and government collaboration at UA, the Alabama Mobility and Power Center. AMP is a cross-campus effort that links engineering, business, and the sciences with industry and state agencies to accelerate research, strengthen talent pipeline, and grow Alabama's economy. The AMP Center is a vehicle for industry, academia, and government to work together on research-enabled innovation that drives economic and workforce development. It reflects the best of UA, faculty expertise aligned with the real needs of our state and region. I've had the privilege of being part of AMP since its inception, and today I want to offer a sneak peek at an upcoming EV projection tool that I developed with Dr. Masut Yavuz from the College of Business. The Evolve Tool forecasts EV growth for Alabama, the Southeast, and the nation. It then translates those projections into workforce needs across manufacturing, service, grid and charging, logistics, and the broader supply chain to identify the jobs, skills, and training required. The goal is practical planning for state agencies, industry partners, workforce boards, and of course educators. AMP has engaged more than 30 faculty from multiple colleges on grant proposals, sponsored research, and research service agreements. This breadth matters. It brings engineering, business, computer science, social sciences, education, and others together so that Alabamians benefit from the full bench of UA expertise. AMP has partnered and advanced a significant portfolio of external research funding across 16 grant submissions this year alone totaling $103 million, along with 32 or more consortium members supporting projects and partnerships. These activities have already translated into sponsored research, service agreements, and equipment support that strengthen UA labs and the student experience. The point of all this work is impact. Centers like AMP help faculty engage in theoretical research, such as advanced battery manufacturing techniques and power systems innovation. They also deliver immediate value by helping Alabamians plan for workforce needs, training and retraining, K through 12, and of course, higher education pathways, along with infrastructure decisions that are on the horizon right now. When we connect research to implementation, we create opportunities for students and jobs for Alabamians. AMP is just one example among many strong centers at UA that enable university-wide collaboration and direct partnerships with industry and government. These collaborations help our faculty secure competitive awards, mentor students in real settings, and deliver results that matter outside the lab and classroom. This is the UA difference that our partners see and trust. I want to close today with where I began, with gratitude. It's been an honor to work with each of you and with our campus leaders. Thank you for your commitment to our faculty, to our students, and to the people of Alabama. I look forward to continuing to work with you for the remainder of my term as Senate President. Thank you for your time, and as always, roll tide!
All right, Dr. Mueller, will you please present the UA Institutional Report?
Let's see if we can get the "four more years" chant going. Well, good morning. Since assuming the role of the University of Alabama's 30th President this summer, it's been an absolute pleasure to serve this institution. Nearly two centuries of achievement and progress have brought UA to this moment, one filled with possibility. This is our time to build on that foundation, amplify the capstone's impact, advance our state, and shape what comes next. Each day, I have the privilege of working with nearly 7,800 faculty and staff and more than 42,000 students at the University of Alabama. I'm further honored to partner with this Board of Trustees and the University of Alabama system. Likewise, I appreciate the opportunity to work alongside my colleagues at the University of Alabama at Birmingham with Dr. Ray Watts, at the UAB Health System Chief Executive Officer Don Burgorella, and at the University of Alabama in Huntsville, Dr. Chuck Carr. I've been asked a simple but important question several times over the last few months: what drew me to Alabama? I thought I knew the University of Alabama. I've always known the traditions, Denny chimes, the legacies of Bryant and Saban, and the not-so-subtle words in Dixieland Delight at the football games. But during the interview process, I began to learn of the exciting growth of the university over the past quarter-century. But I don't need to tell this group, you cannot truly know UA until you experience campus and become part of the community. There is no 30-second commercial that can appropriately capture the Alabama experience. UA is special, and UA represents the promise of what higher education can do for individuals, families, communities, and our entire state. Over the past four months, it has been incredible to engage with the tradition of University of Alabama athletics. But what you see on television from Saban Field does not compare to what you feel inside Bryant-Denny Stadium. I've loved cheering on the Crimson Tide this season and seeing firsthand the focus and teamwork that define our legacy. The football season has been electric this year and a great reminder that the same pride and excellence extend across all of our athletics programs. I've also had the chance to attend volleyball and soccer games where the energy and talent of our student-athlete sign just as brightly. We celebrate athletics at UA, and we should. At Alabama, the same spirit that celebrates a touchdown, though, also celebrates a student who earns a national fellowship, a faculty member who secures a major research grant, or a research team that develops a breakthrough discovery. We are both exceptional in athletics and academics, and while our academic strength is significant today, we are not content. We will continue to raise the bar in teaching and discovery and our influence across every discipline, whether our students are studying law, education, English, or dance. That shared pursuit of impact on the field and in the classroom defines who we are and what we stand for at the University of Alabama. Now, almost a full semester into my presidency, I can tell you this: nothing compares to the beauty of our campus, the energy on the quad between classes, the pride that this state feels for its flagship, or the commitment I have seen from our students, our faculty, our staff, and our alumni. What drew me to UA was the opportunity to lead an institution that is already strong, but not satisfied, one that knows its influence reaches far beyond campus borders. I've never been part of an institution so united on purpose, so dedicated to student success, and so full of optimism for our future, strengthened by the collaboration and commitment of our community as well as our state. Alabama is a state on the rise, expanding its economy, diversifying its industries, and investing in its people. With that growth comes both responsibility and opportunity for the University of Alabama. We are living in a time when many top U.S. universities have simply become unaffordable and have lost sight of their role in delivering workforce and leaders the nation needs. Just look at the value of the University of Alabama. This chart truly drives this point home. Among top-tier universities, few can match the quality and value of education, the pathways to success, and the levels of access that we provide. We are preparing the next generation of leaders affordably, effectively, and at a scale that creates real and lasting impact in our state and in our nation. When the average American family earns around $83,000 a year and the average Alabama family earns closer to $67,000 a year, the rising cost of higher education can truly feel out of reach, and for many, it is out of reach. At UA, we remain deeply committed to providing access, a world-class education that families can afford; that return on that investment is undeniable. Our graduates are engaging the workforce prepared to lead, innovate, and give back, all without the level of debt that burdens so many elsewhere. That is the true value of an Alabama education. Today, we are positioned to capture and capitalize on this momentum, to leverage our strengths as Alabama's flagship, and to translate them into impact for our students and for our state. Our charge is clear: to make certain the next generation of innovators, leaders, and public servants find both access and excellence right here at the University of Alabama. College is more than just about memorizing facts for tests. It is about being challenged to think critically, tackle complex questions, synthesize information, engage with the world, and take initiative. That is why, beginning this year, experiential learning, simply put, "learning by doing", will be a graduation requirement for all UA students, ensuring that every undergraduate completes a meaningful opportunity, connecting classroom knowledge with a real-world application. For example, instead of just memorizing chemistry equations during their freshman year, our students will also experience how that chemistry applies to industrial manufacturing. Instead of pre-med curriculums fully focused on anatomy, coursework may be complemented by hands-on experiences that show how human disease affects the body through shadowing physicians and nurses. In short, every UA student will graduate having engaged in research, internship, service, or leadership that prepares them for the jobs and the technologies for tomorrow. That is the Alabama advantage. Our graduates will leave ready for the future because we are providing them with the resources and the connections and the real-world experience. You can see that connection between education and economic growth taking shape across our state, from advanced manufacturing in aerospace to healthcare, accounting, energy, and finance, industries where UA students and faculty are helping to drive the future. As we expand access, our priority remains clear: to serve the students and families of Alabama because this institution exists for the people of Alabama. Over the past several months, I've traveled across Alabama: Huntsville, Birmingham, Dothen, Fort Payne, Mobile, Montgomery, Florence, Auburn, yes, even Auburn, the Eastern Shore, and Gadsden, meeting talented and prospective students and families, as well as teachers, principals, and counselors who guide them. Those conversations reaffirm that Alabama students see UA as a place for possibility and opportunity, one that welcomes them, challenges them, and prepares them to lead and succeed. In-state momentum continues to build. We are seeing strong interest in Alabama students who recognize the quality and the value of this flagship university. This fall, we welcomed the largest student body in our history, including thousands of the nation's top scholars: National Merit, McCullough, Fulbright, Goldwater, and Randall Scholars, Capstone Men and Women, Shelby Scholars, and many others who could attend any university in the country they're choosing Alabama, raising the bar for academic excellence across our campus. We're also seeing continued growth in professional programs and first-generation students. Their success is opening the doors for families who've never had this chance before and shaping a legacy that will endure for generations. Once again, we are among the nation's top producers of faculty Fulbright scholars, and the graduate school enrollment now exceeds 6,200, another UA record, and a clear sign of our growing reach and reputation. Our expanding research enterprise is connecting discovery with impact, helping our state stay competitive, drawing investment in innovation, and preparing our graduates not only to take the jobs, but to create them. And as we grow, we must do so strategically, aligning our enrollment with the workforce needs of Alabama and the nation while certainly preserving the signature student experience that defines the University of Alabama. Our growth must serve a purpose: to strengthen the state's talent pipeline and ensure our graduates are ready to lead in every sector of the economy. At the same time, we must be thoughtful as we move forward, ensuring this institution remains a place of community, a home away from home for our students and alumni where they can walk across the quad and greet peers that they know by name. That is the Alabama student experience that we must protect even as we grow. And it is critical that we must continue to develop innovative and welcoming portals for these bright minds, ones that reflect the caliber of the students and the employers that seek their talents. As we serve more Alabama students than ever before, we must also look forward to the industries and innovations that are serving their future. Across the state and nation, new workforce and research needs are emerging, and we must be ready to meet these demands. Recently, we've seen remarkable confidence in the university's direction through two historic college namings: the Lee J. Steislinger College of Engineering and the J. Frank Bearfield Jr. College of Arts and Sciences. Each represents not only extraordinary generosity, but also enduring trust in the future of our university and our ability to prepare students who will lead in the industries that define Alabama's economic growth. In the past three months, I've seen major milestones in the economy of Alabama. Recently, Airbus announced exciting news of its expansion in Mobile, and it will be important for UA to continue strengthening partnerships with both Airbus and the Port of Mobile to connect our students- of Mobile to connect our students with global energy and industry. In Birmingham, growth in life sciences, healthcare, and finance is creating new opportunities for our students to engage in research, internships, and careers that shape these sectors. In Huntsville, collaborations with Space Force, the defense industry, and FBI are expanding our reach in aerospace, cybersecurity, and communications. And in Montgomery, advancements in robotics are transforming manufacturing and packaging. Right here in Tuscaloosa, partnerships with Alabama Power and Mercedes-Benz are advancing research and workforce development, fueling innovation that directly supports Alabama's growing economy and automotive industries. These are the fields where Alabama students must be prepared to lead and where this university must be prepared to deliver both the talent and the innovation. To meet these needs and lead in these sectors, we will be expanding the Stieslinger College of Engineering, particularly in materials and manufacturing, transportation, aerospace, energy, and software. At the same time, growth in areas such as quantum computing and geospatial sciences in the Bearfield College of Arts and Sciences will be essential to sustaining the breadth and depth of our academic excellence, and our honors college must set the standard as one of the nation's premier programs for top scholars. To complement this workforce, we will be adding bench strength in business, human environmental sciences, education, law, communication, and many others. These programs will prepare leaders who will advance new areas of the U.S. economy, individuals deeply grounded in business and operations but experienced in experiential training in defense, policy, health, energy, and finance. And we must double down in the data sciences. No matter their discipline, all of our students must be fluent in data science and artificial intelligence to compete and lead in the future workforce. We're actively developing formal structures around these disciplines to ensure that all UA students are at the forefront of data fluency and discovery, and there's much more to come in this space as we continue to expand our capacity for innovation and cross-disciplinary research. To capture this momentum and continue to grow opportunities for our students, we must also make best use of every dollar that is entrusted to us. Every dollar at the University of Alabama represents someone investing in our mission: legislators, parents, donors, alumni students, as well as this board. Fiscal responsibility and accountability have been top priorities my first 100 days, ensuring that we steward every resource wisely and invest where it will have the greatest impact. On October 15th this year, I asked our leadership team to centrally align all of our finance and business operations across campus, including our information technology teams. These changes implemented November 1st, strengthened consistency, reduced administrative burden, and enabled us to focus on value-added activities that advance our core mission. In addition, we will implement new, modern operating system software as part of this realignment, a cloud-based enterprise platform designed to enhance efficiency, improve business processes, and ensure the University of Alabama maintains competitiveness and future readiness. I want to thank Dr. Dan Laizel and his team for their leadership and dedication in implementing these efforts. By aligning our people, processes, and technology, we are reinforcing the operational foundation that allows us to deliver our academic and research ambitions. That foundation is strengthened daily by the expertise of our faculty as well as our deans. Under the leadership of our faculty senate led by Dr. Matthew Hudnall, as you heard, the university continues to benefit from collaboration, insight, and shared commitment to advancing our mission through effective shared governance. I appreciate their dedication and partnership in this important work. That same commitment is reflected in our staff, whose talent and professionalism drive excellence across every part of our campus. Today, I want to recognize the leadership of our Professional Staff Assembly led by President Kelly Wolf and our Office Clerical and Technical Staff Assembly led by President Allison Holliday for their ongoing contributions to our success. Shared governance also extends to our students, whose voices and our vision shape the campus experience in many meaningful ways. I am grateful for the leadership of our Student Government Association, led ably by President Stu Lebonhaus, for advancing the initiatives that enhance student engagement and strengthen the sense of community right here at the University of Alabama. With a strong foundation in place, our next focus must be on the individuals who will carry this institution forward and lead the state. Together, we must develop the next generation of decision-makers and innovators, individuals who will shape the future with integrity and resolve. Principal leadership, as Chancellor Sid Trant said, requires sound judgment, clear communication, and the courage to make difficult decisions. It calls for the ability to navigate with complexity, remain steady under pressure, and to act importantly with empathy. It is critical that the University of Alabama prepare these leaders, not only to address the challenges of today, but to develop new strategies that create and shape opportunities of tomorrow. That is why, with this board's approval and support, the University of Alabama will launch the School of Leadership and Policy, the first of its kind in our state and among only a few nationwide. The school will be housed in historic Farah Hall, a former home to the UA Law School located in the heart of campus. This location is symbolic of what this school represents: leadership and service at the center of our university's mission. Farah Hall will undergo a transformational renovation, a project that will create a dynamic space for students, faculty, staff, and industry leaders, including our federal and state partners, to gather and exchange ideas. It will be a place where knowledge is developed, not just disseminated, reflecting the innovative spirit and the purpose that define the University of Alabama. The vision of the School of Leadership and Policy is to establish a nationally-recognized institution for leadership and public policy education, building on the Capstone-storied history of educating effective civic leaders in policy who are shaping Alabama and beyond. Its mission is to provide interdisciplinary, practice-oriented education that prepares leaders to become effective leaders and public servants who contribute to Alabama's social, economic, and civic well-being. The school's priorities reflect that purpose. First, it will advance educational excellence by combining theory with practical policy application. Second, it will emphasize leadership development, equipping our students with the knowledge, ethics, and skills necessary for effective public service. Third, it will promote service and impact through strong partnerships with local, state, and federal agencies that foster civic engagement. And then finally, it will contribute to economic development by preparing leaders to address the challenges facing Alabama, our region, and our nation. The interdisciplinary curriculum will equip students to lead effectively in whatever arena they choose: civic life, government, or the corporate or nonprofit boardroom, grounded in the principles that shape Americans' institutions, laws, and public discourse. Beyond the classroom, those principles will travel with them, guiding future leaders in public service, private enterprise, and the community life as they put their education into practice. Students will engage directly with public institutions, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and private sector partners through internships, policy labs, and community-based projects, ensuring they graduate ready to solve complex challenges with tangible solutions. From its home in Farah Hall, the School of Leadership and Policy will stand as both a tribute to our past and a launch point for a pipeline of public servants and the leaders that will define our future. But this is much, much more than just an academic initiative. It is a statement about who we are and what we value as an institution: courage, integrity, and service to others. To support that spirit of leadership, we are honored today to share the story of one of Alabama's own, a proud UA graduate who continues to shape the future of our state and nation, serving with character and conviction, Senator Katie Britt.
I am a proud 2004 University of Alabama graduate. My time at the university sparked a passion to serve, and it gave me a foundation for success that has taken me all the way to the United States Senate. Prior to attending UA, I never knew a career in public service and leadership was even a possibility. As I look to the future, there is absolutely no doubt that this university has an incredible opportunity to educate and empower the next generation of leaders. By establishing the School of Leadership and Policy, UA is taking a bold step in equipping future policymakers and public servants with the tools and the resources they need to succeed. I am confident that through this program, our university will become a national model for leadership development and applied policy education. Students will be taught the analytical, communication, and leadership skills necessary to address the challenges that face both Alabama and our great country. For nearly 200 years, the University of Alabama has stood as a force for good, producing leaders of all parties and branches of government, all united in their commitment to serve our state and nation. The School of Leadership and Policy will continue to build on that important work, driving our great state forward and into the future. I cannot wait to see the lasting impact of the program as we continue to show the nation that Alabama is truly where legends are made.
Senator Britt's story reminds us that leadership is not defined by a title or position, but by influence, integrity, and the power to inspire others toward a purpose greater than themselves. From high school valedictorian to UA's 92nd SGA president, to the UA School of Law, to serving U.S. Senator Richard Shelby, and now as the first woman elected to the U.S. Senate from Alabama, Senator Britt's story exemplifies the leadership journeys we hope will inspire our students across the political spectrum. The University of Alabama School of Leadership and Policy will build on that same foundation, equipping our students to strengthen communities, drive innovation, and inspire others to follow. I am grateful to the board and the system for their vision and their support in this space and to our faculty that will lead within the school. But that is only the beginning. In the months ahead, we will continue investing in strategic initiatives that align with our academic strengths while deepening connections and collaborations with our sister institutions to meet Alabama's workforce needs and the demands of the future. You've already heard about our work in data science, but there is more to come in that space, as well as early efforts with our partners to address the state's growing nursing shortage, particularly in communities where access to care is vital. These initiatives reflect a shared commitment to serving Alabama through strategic collaboration and innovation. And just as leadership thrives on connection, so does too the success of our university, which depends on strong partnerships across our campuses, throughout our system, and with this board. At every step, expanding academic programs, elevating research, preparing the workforce, and launching bold initiatives, your leadership makes the difference. When we work together, our impact multiplies. That collective drive is what makes the University of Alabama not only strong today, but to shape the future. As I close, I want to return to what lies at the core of our work: meeting the challenging needs and changing needs of higher education, the workforce, and leadership in this defining moment for our university, our state, and our future. Universities can either react, or they can lead. Our focus must remain clear: to equip every student with the skills and confidence to make a difference in classrooms, boardrooms, labs, and communities across our nation. With the talent, scale, and vision we share, the University of Alabama is not only prepared for the next era of higher education, we'd like to shape it. Together, we will continue advancing our mission and setting the standard for what public higher education can achieve through the discoveries we make, the students we prepare, and the lives we change. With your partnership and trust, we will continue building on Alabama's success, ensuring this university not only meets the challenges ahead, but defines what comes next. The future belongs to the Crimson Tide. Thank you, and roll tide.
Thank you, Pete, and thank you for your bold vision. Before we move into the committee reports, we have one UA Administrative Action item, which is a bit anticlimactic at this point, given Pete just told you what it was going to be, which is consideration of a resolution granting approval of the request to establish the School of Leadership and Policy at the University of Alabama and permission to submit this change to the Alabama Commission on Higher Education. Prior to opening the floor for discussion, may I have a motion to consider this item? We have a motion in a second, so Pete, if you'll please present the item.
I'm pleased to present for your approval the creation of the School of Leadership and Policy at the University of Alabama. The vision and mission of the School of Leadership and Policy centers education in theory and practice that will elevate outstanding students, providing them with the knowledge and experience to positively impact our state and the country. To accomplish these goals, we must act boldly. By creating the School of Leadership and Policy, we are leaning into our commitment to our students and our place as the flagship of higher education, serving the state of Alabama. We are being intentional in setting strong foundations for the School of Leadership and Policy. By placing the school on solid footing, we can look forward to seeing it grow and develop under the school's leaders and faculty, who will take up the torch and build up critical elements that will further enhance the school. There's a need and desire for a School of Leadership and Policy, and we cannot wait to see what the students, the faculty, and the staff will accomplish together, both while they were studying here on campus and as they engage in public service and leadership in Tuscaloosa and far beyond. It is with great excitement that I respectfully request the board's favorable consideration of the request to establish the School of Leadership and Policy at the University of Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you. It has long been the responsibility of this institution to produce and train the next group of political and business leaders, and this school will be integral to getting that done. It's exciting to see the board and see our institutions not simply accept what the future throws at us, but to shape the future by taking action first. We fully embrace that responsibility, and we look forward to watching the school succeed in developing those leaders in both business and politics, and the impact, I believe, on the school and on our state will be profound. Are there any other questions or comments concerning this item from the board? We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the UA Administrative Item, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. Congratulations, the item is approved. Okay, we'll now move to the executive, I'm sorry, to the committee reports and begin with the draft of the Executive Committee Report that was provided to the board in advance of this meeting. Are there any questions or comments concerning the Executive Committee's actions? Right, hearing none, the report is accepted, and I now recognize Trustee Marsete for a report from the Investment Committee.
Pro Tim Phelps, the Investment Committee met yesterday and approved the termination of one manager and the investment of funds with one existing manager and one new manager. These items do not require separate approval by the Board of Trustees, and this concludes the report of the Investment Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Marsete. Are there any questions or comments regarding the committee's actions? Right, hearing none, the report is accepted, and I now recognize Trustee Gray for a report from the Finance Committee.
Pro Tim Phelps, the Finance Committee met yesterday and reviewed six resolutions. The committee unanimously recommended approval of the resolutions, and I so move for the approval by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Trustee Gray. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments regarding the committee's recommendations? Right, hearing none, and no further discussion. All in favor of approving the resolutions recommended by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please say no. Then the resolutions are hereby approved. I now recognize Trustee Malden for a report from the Physical Properties Committee.
Pro Tim Phelps, the Physical Property Committee met yesterday and considered 13 agenda items for action by this board. The committee thoroughly reviewed and unanimously recommends approval of these items. I move for approval by the board.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, Anna. Second, is there any discussion, questions, or comments concerning the committee's actions? Committee's actions obviously include the substantial renovation of Farah Hall, and that'll be exciting to watch, and we appreciate Trustee Malden taking the time to tour the school. If she was as old as I was, she would know exactly about that school.
I love seeing where you went to school.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving the resolutions recommended by the Physical Properties Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
Sir, this concludes-
The resolutions are approved.
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome.
This concludes our report.
Thank you. I now recognize Trustee Simon for a report from the Honorary Degrees and Recognitions Committee.
Thank you, Pro Tim Phelps. The Honorary Degrees and Recognition Committee met this morning, reviewed 10 resolutions, and I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to express our gratitude to our donors, our development teams led by Bob- donors, our development teams led by Bob Pierce and Tom Brandon and Malley Hale. They all have done a wonderful job. And in Huntsville in particular, I feel like we should recognize Trustees Ron Gray and Jeff Gronberg for the exceptional work they have done in helping create momentum in those cities and in particular to the development efforts. But having said that, the committee unanimously recommends approval of these resolutions, and I so move for their approval by the Board of Trustees.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding committee actions? All right, hearing none, we will vote. All in favor of approving the resolutions recommended by the Honorary Degrees and Recognitions Committee, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please say no. Then those resolutions are hereby approved. I now recognize Trustee Brooks for a report from the Nominating Committee.
Pro Tim Phelps, the Nominating Committee met today and discussed three items of business, which were the nominations of trustees to fill seats in the second, fourth, and sixth congressional districts. The committee unanimously nominated Mike Brock to fill the seat in the second district, Evie Malden to fill the seat in the fourth district, and Mala Calhoun to fill the seat in the sixth district. Pro Tim Phelps, would you please ask the Board's Secretary to distribute ballots for the election of trustees?
All right, thank you. Having received the recommendations of the Nominating Committee, Mark, will you please distribute the ballots? K. Hart's collecting all the ballots. All right, thank you, everybody. I'm pleased to announce the election of Mike Brock, representing the second district, Evie Malden representing the fourth district, and Mala Calhoun representing the sixth district, and appreciate each of you agreeing to continue to serve. Thank you.
And this concludes the report of the Nominating Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Brooks. I now recognize Trustee Humphrey for a report from the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee.
Pro Tim Phelps, Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met this morning and reviewed 21 items for action and heard a report on five information items. The committee unanimously recommended approval of the 21 action item, and I so move for their approval by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Trustee Humphrey. We have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion, a second, and any questions or comments regarding the committee's actions? Hearing no further discussion, then all in favor of the recommendations of the Student Affairs and Academic Affairs Committee, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. And those resolutions are hereby approved. Is there any further business that anyone wishes to bring before the board? Okay, hearing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you.